So I guess I'm first.
First, I'd like to call Mayor Lovelace, Mayor Yank Lovelace. And Ed Hines will administer the vote.
Yeah. We need to keep it in our little place. We don't say crap very often.
We start them.
It's our turn.
I wonder what's hidden in the announcements that's there.
I need a beer. I need a drink. I just did not. I got a bunch of celebrity. Oh, that would be funny. That would be awful. Now you're really... Oh. I have a bad cough. You want a beer? Here, I want you. I'll go. Okay. You can leave this one. I'm gonna take a beer. I just did not. I got a bunch of celebrity. Oh, that would be funny. That would be awful. Now you're really... Oh. I have a bad cough. You want a beer? Here, I want you. I'll go. Okay. You can leave this one. I'm gonna take a beer. I need a beer. I just did not. I got a bunch of celebrity. Oh, that would be funny. That would be awful. Now you're really... Oh. I have a bad cough. You want a beer? Here, I want you. I'll go. Okay. You can leave this one. I'm gonna take a beer. I need a beer. I just did not. I got a bunch of celebrity. Oh, that would be funny. That would be awful. Now you're really... Oh. I have a bad cough. You want a beer? Here, I want you. I'll go. Okay. You can leave this one. I'm gonna take a beer. I need a beer. I just did not. I got a bunch of celebrity. Oh, that would be funny. That would be awful. Now you're really... Oh. I have a bad cough. You want a beer? Here, I want you. I'll go. Okay. Please place your hand on the bough. I will raise your right hand with good afternoon. I, Yank Lovelace, do solemnly swear. I, Yank Lovelace, do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And that I will support the Constitution of the State of Alabama. And that I will support the Constitution of the State of Alabama. So long as I remain a citizen thereof. So long as I remain a citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Bruton, Alabama. Discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Bruton, Alabama. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you. Hi. That was a good one. And I'll be back here all morning. Thank you. That's it. Thank you. He sits there all night.
Let me get Mr. Brown in here.
Make sure it has your name on it.
Oh. You need to do it. You need to do it. You need to do it. First order is back.
And next, I would like to call on Council-elect Kerry R. Brown.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay. Unusual days.
Are we leaving our masks on?
I'm gonna take mine off by the door.
No?
Yes.
Lady Brown?
Yes.
Hey, Alex. Ask him to step out there. Ask the people to step out there. They're not supposed to be inside.
Okay. Okay. And now, Council-elect Kerry R. Brown, and also administered by Ed Hines.
The good afternoon is, I, Kerry R. Brown, do solemnly swear.
I, Kerry R. Brown, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of councilman District One of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
Discharge the duties of councilman District One of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. There it is. Just make sure he's not too...
Next will be Council-elect David Brian Jennings.
Good evening, everybody. Good afternoon. I, David Brian Jennings, do solemnly swear.
I, David Brian Jennings, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Two of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Two of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. What happened?
Oh, there's no...
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
He's doing great job. Joe's got that under control.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Dave.
And next...
You'd ask him to just step back outside.
Where goes all your pictures? Are you throwing your pictures back after me?
Yeah, just ask him to step outside.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Next, I'll call on Council-elect Feast Broughton. Oh, he's outside. He's outside. The oath for Feast, Council-elect Feast Broughton will also be administered by Attorney Ed Hines.
Right to the right hand. The good afternoon. I, Feast Broughton, do solemnly swear.
I, Feast Broughton, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Three of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Three of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
Please do a great job.
Joe's got that under control.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave.
And next...
You'd ask him to just step back outside.
Where goes all your pictures? Are you throwing your pictures back after me?
Yeah, just ask him to step outside.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Next, I'll call on Council-elect Feast Broughton. Oh, he's outside. He's outside. The oath for Feast, Council-elect Feast Broughton will also be administered by Attorney Ed Hines.
Right to the right hand. The good afternoon. I, Feast Broughton, do solemnly swear.
I, Feast Broughton, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Three of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Three of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you.
They're good. They're just... Make sure he's not too...
Next will be Council-elect David Brian Jennings.
Right to the right hand. Good afternoon. I, David Brian Jennings, do solemnly swear.
I, David Brian Jennings, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Two of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
Discharge the duties of councilman District Two of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. Yep.
He's doing a great job. Joe's got that under control.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Dave.
And next...
You'd ask him to just step back outside.
Where goes all your pictures? Are you throwing your pictures back after me?
Yeah, just ask him to step outside.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Next, I'll call on Council-elect Feast Broughton. Oh, he's outside. He's outside. The oath for Feast, Council-elect Feast-elect, Feast DeBroughton, will also be administered by Attorney Ed Hines.
Right to the right hand. The good afternoon. I, Feast DeBroughton, do solemnly swear.
I, Feast DeBroughton, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
The duties of councilman District Three of the city of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you. I'll get you after you. Thank you. I'll get you after you. Thank you. Please, please sign your... Thank you.
I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you. Thank you. I'll get you after you. Thank you. Please, please sign your... Thank you.
Please, please sign your... Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you. I ain't gonna say anything. It's time till you get in.
I'll get you after you.
Thank you.
The next elected official to take the oath will be Council-elect Joe Nathan Watson. And that oath will be administered by Attorney Everett Price.
Right to the left hand, hold on. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I chose Nathan Watson.
I chose Nathan Watson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
So long as I remain a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
The duties of councilman District Four.
The duties of councilman District Four.
Which I will bow to.
Which I will bow to.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
I think they were outside.
No, no, no.
She, he, he has it.
I was about to have a hand. I was like, Alex. Yeah, I was. Thank you, Dave. Not to them.
The next elected official to take the oath of office will be Council-elect Cheryl P. Barton. And the oath will be administered by City of Evergreen Mayor-elect Stan Stallworth.
Good morning. Good question. That's been by what was you writing? I figured. I.
I.
Cheryl P. Barton.
Cheryl P. Barton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I continue as a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue as a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
The duties of Councilman District Five of the City of Bruton, Alabama. The duties, Councilman District Five of the City of Bruton, Alabama.
The duties of District Five and the City of Bruton, Alabama.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hi, Cheryl. Hi, Cheryl. If you'll just ask him to step outside. Hey, Brooke. Brooke. Yes. Chief of Police to come here and have a seat. Ask Chief of Police to come here and have a seat.
To continue with the meeting, uh, the first, the next item is the pledge of allegiance, and I call on Councilman Watson.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public which stands in our nation. In our government. In the bill of liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to rescind the previous council's rules of procedure. It's ordinance number twenty dash one-one-zero-two.
Motion to introduce ordinance number twenty dash one-one-o-two.
Motion by Councilor Brown, second by Councilor Broughton, to introduce ordinance number twenty dash one-one-o-two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings, yes. Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and the, and ordinance number twenty dash one-one-o-two is introduced.
Mayor, a motion for immediate consideration of ordinance number twenty dash one-one-o-two.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Barton, for immediate introduc-, immediate consideration of ordinance number twenty dash one-one-o-two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Mayor Lovelace.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Broughton, second by Councilor Barton, to approve ordinance number twenty dash one-one-o-two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and the ordinance to rescind ordinance number oh-eight-one-one-o-three, uh, rules of, um, rules of procedure is...
Next item is to approve the rules of procedure of this council, resolution number twenty dash one-one-zero-two.
Motion to approve rules of procedure, resolution twenty dash one-one-o-two.
Motion by Councilor Brown, second by Councilor Broughton, to approve resolution number twenty dash one-one-o-two. Is there any discussion?
Question. Uh, when would it be to have something that you could sign?
It's the same.
It's the same.
Same times.
Yes.
For the public, that's, uh, we meet, uh, second.
Second and fourth Mondays of each month at four-thirty PM. Workshops at three-thirty. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and resolution number twenty dash one-one-o-two rules of procedure is approved.
Next item is to approve election of a mayor pro tempore. That's a council appointment.
Mayor, I propose motion to appoint Councilor Feast DeBraun as mayor pro tempore.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Barton, uh, to approve Councilor, uh, Feast DeBraun as, uh, mayor pro tempore. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and the mayor pro tempore is Councilor Broughton.
Next item is to approve the depositories of city funds, and you're gonna show that list?
Uh, I don't have a visual, but just the, our primary depositories at this time are Trustmark Bank, who we have forty-two depository accounts with, uh, Bank of Bruton, we have twenty-three depository accounts with. Um, we would also like to suggest in your consideration that we have as optional depositories, uh, the other local banks being Twenty-Second State Bank, First Progressive Bank, Truist Bank, Gulf Winds Credit Union, and Bruton Mill Federal Credit Union.
Now, give me an old option.
Okay. Twenty-Second State Bank.
Uh-huh.
First Progressive Bank. Truist Bank. That's T-R-U-I-S-T.
B-B-N-T.
Which used to be B-B-N-T. Uh, Gulf Winds Credit Union. And Bruton Mill Federal Credit Union.
Why would we be optioning?
Hmm. Uh, ju-, just in case if we needed to, if, say, say one of them had a great rate that we wanted to deposit, you know.
I'm on motion to approve the depository of city funds as mentioned by the city clerk.
Motion by Councilor Brown, second by Councilor Broughton, to approve, uh, the depositories as presented by the city clerk. Uh, is there any discussion?
One more question.
Okay.
You said Trump over that forty-two. What's forty-two? That forty-two, a cap?
Uh, Twen-, Twenty-Second is two, two.
No, he's asking us.
Trump.
Oh, yes, uh, Trustmark. Trustmark is forty-two depository accounts currently.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and the depositories as presented are approved.
Next item is to approve the reappointment of William Roy Stokes Jr. as municipal judge. That's a council appointment.
Did I make that motion to appoint William Roy Stokes Jr. as municipal judge?
Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Broughton, to reappoint William Roy Stokes as municipal court judge. Uh, is there any further, is there any discussion?
Bill was my first cousin, and the city attorney told me that I could vote on this. I thought it'd be okay if I voted.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and William Roy Stokes is reappointed as municipal court judge.
Next item is to approve the reappointment of Edward T. Hines as municipal attorney and prosecutor. It's also a council appointment.
Motion to approve the reappointment of Edward T. Hines as municipal attorney and prosecutor. Second.
Motion by Councilor Brown, second by Councilor Barton, to reap-, reappoint Attorney Edward T. Hines as, uh, city attorney and city municipal court prosecutor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and Edward T. Hines is reappointed.
Next would be to, uh, approve the reappointment of C. Daniel White as municipal public defender. That's also a council appointment.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Broughton, second by Councilor Barton, to reappoint C. Daniel White as, uh, municipal court, um, defender. Um, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton.
Yes.
Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and C. Daniel White is reappointed.
Next item is to elect a council representative as a member of the City Planning Commission, and that is a council appointment.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Broughton, second by Councilor Barton, to appoint Councilor, uh, Joe Watson as the, uh, the council representative, uh, representative member of the City Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and, uh, Joe Watson is appointed.
Next item is to appoint Elizabeth Brooks Horton as city clerk treasurer. That's also a council appointment.
Motion by Councilor Watson, second by Councilor Broughton, to appoint Elizabeth Broo-, Horton as, as city clerk. Um, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Jennings.
Yes.
Councilor Broughton. Councilor Watson.
Yes.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Motion carries, and Elizabeth Brooke Horton is approved as city clerk.
At this time. At this time, I'd like to formally introduce our newest police chief, Randy Nicholson. If you'd come forward to the podium. Randy has been a, uh, member of the police force for, I think, thirty-two years. And he has been in office for a week or so, and I wanted to introduce him to the council, and congratulate you, and just give him a round of applause. Has, um, I'll let you get a picture first. I'd also like to mention, uh, outgoing city clerk Alex McDowell. Alex, uh, came on board with us in two thousand and sixteen, uh, has faithfully served this city, uh, numerous, uh, hours, both day and nights and weekends, and, uh, I work very closely with, with Alex, and I appreciate all your, your hard work and dedication. And I'd like to present him with a, with a plaque and a key to the city, uh, and appreciation of his distinguished, uh, service. And we'll just come out. Uh, the meeting's adjourned, but I would like to tell the, uh, mention to the council, if you want additional pictures with your family, we have our photographers here. There'll be a website that they will send you a link to with a password, and you can freely hand that out to whoever might want, uh, these pictures. So congratulations to each of us, and look forward to working with you.